All right, we'd like to welcome everyone out to our city council meeting tonight. Appreciate all those who are here in attendance and those who are out there watching on TV. Probably about 5 million, just to let you know. Don't want to get you scared. Anyway, we've asked Briggs Anderson to come up and do our motivational presentation and our prayer, so come on up.
Okay, so today I just wanted to talk about the flag in our national anthem. And it's been a lot of controversy today in the news about kneeling during our national anthem and to the flag. And it has caused a controversy because they claim it's their right to kneel. But the way I see it is that we stand in respect for our flag and what has our history of our country and what we've gone through to have the rights. And so it's not about our rights, it's about respecting. And the national anthem is just a small time in our busy American lives that we all get to stand as a country in unison. And that unison is that we are one of the greatest countries in the world. We may not all agree on how the country runs or what's doing, but as Americans, we should be able to change that and why that's why we have our flag and our national anthem to remind us of that. And so I hope that if you ever feel like you want to kneel or sit, that you stand and pay it forward for what you think our country should do. And now may I offer a prayer? Our dear Father, we thank Thee for this day. We thank Thee for the opportunity to come together as a city council to discuss our communities. We thank Thee for this wonderful country that we live in, for our freedoms and our rights. Please bless that the military and all of our armed forces may be protected and all of our law enforcement and officials may be protected and guided and that we can discuss all we need to tonight without any contention. We say this in the name of Christ with amen.
Thank you. All right, we're glad to have our Cub Scouts here. And I've asked Brayden Collette to come lead us in the pledge legion. Do you want to just come right up here to this stand, right there?
Repeat the pledge of allegiance with me.
I am the leading to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Brayden. We love having scouts here, you know? You'll really enjoy this meeting. If you don't listen to Councilman, Councilmember Beck, you'll be just fine. Oh, sorry. Okay, we'll open this up for public comments. Anyone that'd like to address the mayor and the council, you're sure welcome to come up at this time. See none? Oh, there. Well, what did you text them up for?
I just wanted to be a gentleman and let them come through.
You need to state your name and...
Rank and serial number.
And serial number. Well, I'm George Beardall, but most of the community know me as the Goose Man, Goose in the Wild. And so that's who I am. And just like in school, the principal or the counselors knew that when Coach Beardall came bringing a kid down, it must be a pretty serious issue. So here I am tonight. I've came to the principal. And our issue is, just want to make you aware that there's a new freeway in the state. It's right here in Spanish Fork and it's on 400 East. And it runs from 8th North to the Canyon Road, but especially from 8th North to 4th North. I've even put, "Please slow down on my trash can." I was out there today and some gal come whizzing by me and I thought, "Seriously? Really? We don't read? Wow." So we've even had some good friends that sold their house and moved up to Mapleton. And I thought, "Wow, we don't want anybody else to sell their house. We got some good people up there in that area." Some people call it the Costco freeway and some people call it the North Park Expressway and others call it the North Park Thoroughfare. So we're here tonight and I've got some people up in the neighborhood that's going to support me. And we're going to try and not repeat one another because I know how that doesn't fly.
Doesn't?
Doesn't fly. Okay, last night before I went to my ballgame, from 6:15 to 7:10, I sat in my driveway and did my own little survey. Here's what I come up with. 81 speeders, 42 non-speeders, and 11 questionable drivers. That's 134 cars in 55 minutes. That's one of the busiest streets in Spanish Fork now, 400 East. So we're here tonight to see if we can, Craig and I was talking up there, if we could get a stop sign at 6 North and 400 East. That's halfway between 8th and 4th, and that would reduce the speed. The way it is now, they've got four blocks to get after it. This way it'd cut it down to two. Then I got to talk to Chief Adams before I came in. He says they're willing to get a speed trader up there. Yeah, so that's nice to hear. And I noticed there's not a speed limit sign posted on that road anywhere. Now, I know up by Fresh Market, which is 8th, 8th East, there's one up there that says 25 miles an hour. So I think that would help. Just throwing that out to you guys, see what you think.
Going to be 25 miles an hour or 40?
I think the speed limit is 25, isn't it?
I don't know what it is.
It is.
Okay, residential?
Residential, Steve.
Okay.
Is the corner by you, George, is the yield signs, there's yield signs going east and west?
Yeah, there's yield.
But just to keep the traffic so they can go faster down that road?
Yeah, so I remember when Chief Rosenbaum was the chief, we had a serious accident up there and I asked him what the most dangerous intersections were in town. He looked that up and that 4th East and 5th North is, came in 4th back then. 4th most dangerous, that's way before Costco. So that really blew me away when that intersection came in 4th. Wow. So we just wonder if we could get the police to kind of be in that area a little more often. I know this is a big community now, 40,000 people, and they got a lot to do and we sure appreciate what the police do. I'll bet you five bucks in an hour or so they could use every citation. Like I was there 55 minutes and counted 81 speeders. So that's my spiel. And just like any other time, when I'm done talking, I'm done. So I'm going to shut up and sit down. And I know we got a couple others here that want to say their little spiel.
Thanks, George.
Appreciate it.
Hello?
Hi.
I'm Craig Courtney. I'm George's neighbor. Like you said, we had talked about it and we both notice all the cars, but honestly, I've caught myself speeding on that road. Like you said, you come from 8th North, you get about two blocks up and you, you know, just kind of realize like, "I'm almost 40 miles an hour here, I better slow down." It's just kind of, I think it's kind of the nature of that road. It's kind of an uphill sort of, so people stay on the pedal. So I've caught myself, but my issue is kind of the safety thing. You know, I've got a five-month-old puppy and got a puppy gate, but you know, if they want to, they can push that kind of stuff over. If she got out front, she wouldn't last. And same thing with kids, you know? Niece, nephew, can't be out in front yard unless you're out there with them, you know? Make sure they're in the back and it's just, yeah, it's a really busy road, so I'm just here to support it. That's my concern is the safety issue.
Great.
Thanks.
Appreciate that.
My name's Jean Jackson. I also live on that street. I live on the corner of 5th North and 4th East. I'm right on the corner. I've been there for about 20 years. My husband was there for another 20 years before me and he used to call the corner Crash Corner because that's, there were so many crashes. And I know since I've been there, there's been a lot there. But last year, in the wintertime, we had a crash on that corner and two of the cars ended up on my lawn. Well, there were two cars involved, but they were both on my lawn. And I wasn't really concerned because I didn't have a lawn at that time. I was having, you know, having my boys work on getting some tree stumps now. But this year I put my lawn in, it's been in about two weeks and it's gorgeous and I don't want to see it ruined. So I'm really hoping we can get some cars slowed down so we don't have any more crashes on that corner. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Taylor Siemens. I live on the corner of 4th East and 500 North as well, across from Jean. And I lived there for 26 years of my life with my parents. And we have had so many wrecks on that corner. One year, we actually had a car come up on our lawn and just hours before, my sister and I were out there playing exactly where the car ended up. So ours is also a concern. I just had a brand-new baby, he's four months old. I'd really like for him to go and play out there when he gets older, but it really makes me nervous letting him out there because there's so many wrecks there. We have at least two a month. And near misses every one. So that's my, that's my concern is the safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Taylor.
Hi, I'm Tanya Schalkraft and I also live on the corner of that intersection. And I have actually heard one of the accidents that happened within the last year and then I witnessed the accident that Jean was referring to. And my concern is just obviously the residents that live there, but also people just walking down the sidewalk. When I witnessed the accident that Jean referred to earlier, my concern was if someone had been walking on the sidewalk, they would have been seriously injured, if not fatally injured. And so I'm concerned about the, the safety. And then also just having George have his garage or his garbage bin on the street has helped me too. I live on that street, but sometimes I found myself going faster than I should have. And so it would just be helpful to have the speed limit posted, have a stop sign or something to help minimize the accidents that can happen there.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Tanya.
Anyone else? Appreciate you coming in and bringing that concern to us. I'm sure Chief Adams has heard all those and he'll get right on that and make him, you know, I think whatever we can do to help slow things down up there because we don't want anybody hurt. And this is the way it works. Come in and talk to us, you have an issue, we can see what we can do to get things done. Chris, come on up.
This is Chris Thompson, Public's Work Director. This is something that we've been concerned about as well and, and we have noticed that this is becoming an increasing problem as this area develops because the quickest route to Highway 6 comes along and goes up 8 to here and the quickest route to Costco in that area is you come over to 4th right here. And what you're seeing here is an accident map. So the bigger the circle, the more red the circle, the more accidents you see. And this is over the last 10 years. But what's happening is as this develops, you would expect these two routes to increase. And so just because the 10-year data maybe doesn't have any orange or yellow or red there, I think they have a very legitimate concern and it's something that we've been looking at. And we've been participating in a pretty big study that's analyzing this whole corridor and is looking at that. Some of the things that they've looked at that would probably ease this quite a bit is some sort of an on-ramp system here at Highway 6 so all these people can come here and then quickly get to the Costco area. So that's one solution that we've looked at. We've looked at a unique type of intersection here, a high-T type intersection there. And so we're working really hard on this. It's a very difficult issue. I think asking for a speed limit sign is legitimate. We'll get that up right away. I think that's good. I think increased enforcement is also really good. We can do stop sign warrants for those. There's a national code on stop signs and when you can put them up and not put them up. And so there's a series of about 12 different warrants that you have to look for. And so it involves a study and so we can do that study for the stop signs that you've requested. We are learning that when you put them up when they're not warranted, it sometimes becomes more unsafe because if there's a stop sign where some people don't expect one and some people do, then you run it more. So we have to be careful on that before we can promise stop signs and things like that. But a speed sign for sure, I think a speed trailer and extra enforcement will be, we can work on that. And then some of the more long-term expensive solutions are being looked at, are being planned and budgeted and we're working hard on that. It's, it's almost impossible to be able to afford solutions before the problems come sometimes. And so this is how that is, but really appreciate the concern.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else that'd like to go and address the mayor and the council? If not, we'll go to council comments and let's start with Alson Gourd.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just wondering if the chief would be willing to deputize goose. That would probably solve some...
I'm sure he's had the radar gun in his hand before.
Radar gun, just for clock and baseballs. Yeah, yeah. I hope, I hope the scouts witnessed a great example of how, how concerned citizens can come to the mayor and the city council and we work together to, to get solutions. We live in a great community. That's all I have, Mayor.
Great, Councilman Scopes.
Mayor, I have nothing significant to report at this time.
Great. Councilman Menon, he's got something exciting to refer to.
Yeah, I have some exciting news. I'd echo real quick what Brandon said. That is a lesson of your civic duty to bring something to the attention of, of council and of your city and talk about it. I think one solution that we've talked about just over the last couple of months has been as well, the, the need for some more commercial area on the east side of town too. I live up there, I know Brandon and Stacy do as well, and we, we always complain when we get down in this area to go to Macy's or Costco or something. We're like, "Man, it's a lot of people." And it is because it's 40,000 people in this city now. And we think that's a lot of traffic and that yields, you know, some bad habits and accidents and everything else. But I think part of the forward thinking of this city is to say, "Hey, on the east side, we need to zone some commercial areas as well." So the daily trips from Stacy and Brandon in my neighborhood can be less frequent down to, down to past your house to get to supermarket and everything else because we'll have a supermarket up in our area. And, and you should know that that's your city trying to forward think and that's not always a comfortable situation for some people up on the east side of town. They think, "Hey, I built here and I like these fields and whatnot," but they will love shopping up there too and it'll help congestion around, around your neighborhood as well. So that's a solution long-term that we're looking at as well that you should know. Yeah, and the other thing I just, the mayor alluded to, I just want to thank everyone from the city for all your love, your prayers, your texts, your kind words to my family. We had a baby last week, a little baby boy we welcomed into the city. You mentioned a four-month-old. I about teared up when you started saying four-month-old. I'm getting soft, Mayor. I gotta...
You've always been soft.
But he spent some time in the hospital but came home and I couldn't say enough for everyone up here in the city and all the citizens, my friends, neighbors. And that's truly what it is as a community is to, is to share the love with each other and let the people know that you're, you're thinking of them and caring of them. And we certainly felt that as a, as our little family. So thank you, publicly thank you for that. We truly appreciate it. And that's all I have, Mayor.
All right, Alson Argal.
Are you going to speak about Harvest Moon, Stacy? So first of all, I want to thank George and your neighbors. That's my old stomping area. And obviously we don't get out to see all this and your ears and eyes are important. And none of us want to see any tragedies. It just happened, so that wreck that was on the corner that put two cars on the neighborhood was my nephew. And she's still having some problems with that. So I want that to be safe. And I've noticed that because we, we commune down on the other end where my sister lives and it's turned into a pretty good thoroughfare. So thank you for coming and bringing that to us. And you know, I know these guys, they'll, they'll do some attention to it if they are any. Chris, you know what, it seems like Chris is usually on top of that stuff. So there's some things coming down the road that they're even looking at, understanding that, so appreciate that. The Harvest Moon, I think it was very well attended. There was one heck of a lot of kids. I don't think there was any pumpkins left. It was a lot of fun activities that the kids come down and had. The, I want to say the bands and the groups that came were, as soon as they started playing, everybody crowded over to the stage. And so it was a lot of fun for our community. If you didn't have the opportunity to get there, keep that in mind as that comes around because it's a lot of work, but I think it was a lot of fun for the kids in our community to come and enjoy that Harvest Moon. At the end of last week, as council, we attended a convention in Salt Lake for the ULCT, so the Union, League of Cities and Towns. It takes a lot of time to go to these conventions and I just kind of want to mention the fact that, you know what? We learn a lot of things in those conventions. This, this group particularly is concerned about the cities and the towns in this state. And they bring a lot of stuff to the table, you know, that helps us as council and mayors to better do our jobs, to help run our cities, to bring us tensions to some things that are coming on nationally. And, and there was a lot of good information that took place at that convention and I was grateful for the opportunity to attend that. I know sometimes I think we just go have a great time, which we had a good time, but there was some good stuff that was offered up at that convention from this group and much appreciated. Takes a lot to put together some of these conventions and they do it with the care of the cities in this community and this state. And some of the things that they bring to, you know, and get to let us know about are real important and especially look into the future as we continue to grow and just like we're talking about, our community's growing. We're, we're one of those that are growing in our state. It was kind of neat to announce the other night, I heard them announce over the news. And of course, if you didn't hear that, our state is essentially, as far as unemployment, we're at that zero. It's down below where the people that are, actually don't have jobs are either looking. And so there's, our state is growing and, and very rapidly. And our city is a big part of that, is a good place to live and we want to continue to keep it that way. Thank you, Mayor.
Great. Alson Member Beck.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in, everyone. It was good to hear from you all and it's good to have the scouts here. I don't think I ever reported that we assigned a new chairman, up-and-coming chairman for the Fiesta Days Committee, and that is Mike and Angie Clayson. So we're excited for them. They will be the Fiesta Days chairman for three years. They are right on the heels of Robert and Gail Davies who will exercise and, and commit their time and energy this next year to plan a great Fiesta Day. So I just wanted to report that Mike and Angie have been asked and accepted that three-year volunteer job. Mike knows all about that.
Good times.
And then with the chamber, we realized recently that we had the chamber director working a lot more hours than he was supposed to be working. So we had him originally coming to the Salem and Spanish Fork Chamber council meetings and we, as, as the council representative here and the council representative in Salem will report on the council thing so he can be with his family more. So we had one ribbon cutting in the last two weeks and that was the American Legion Post 68. They were our newest member. Last Wednesday night at 6, we had a great big ribbon cutting for them and it will be an honor to have them as members. And then, let's see. I wanted to let everyone know businesses as well as the community. The 2016 Annual Scarecrow Festival is underway. We are accepting applications. The Chamber of Commerce sponsors that activity. You can enter as a family, as an individual, or as a business. So I think even as a group, scouts, church, young women's, anyone can enter that. And it just, it's a fun thing to have down our main street through the month of October. The chamber has judges and the winner will get $100. So it's just $10 to enter and you can go to the Spanish Fork Chamber of Commerce website and download the entry form and they want all entries in by September 30th. And then other than that, we're about a month and a half away from the end of the farmer's market. So be sure that you're down there visiting fresh fruits and vegetables and, and things change weekly as things come and go in and out of season. So we encourage you to go down there and, and support our local farmers. I think that's all.
Great, thank you. As Chad, our Councilman Argal, talked about, we had that opportunity to go up to League of Cities this past week and, and that is a good thing where you can, the nice thing I like about is you've got representation there from all the cities in the state. And so not only you can go to these meetings and these workshops, but you can also kind of talk to the other council members and mayors and express some of the concerns that you have in your city and they have. And they've got some solutions, you've got some solutions and you can work together and make this a great state. So that was good. And the Harvest Moon hurrah and our airport celebration that we've had these past few weeks are awesome. The Green Men were really good. Kids loved those guys and it was just good to go down there and see all the, the families there together, enjoying what we have here in Spanish Fork, the celebrations that we have. And so appreciate all those volunteers that helped put that on. Takes a lot of time, a lot of effort and a lot of good volunteers. And I just want to shout out to all those volunteers for putting that on and all those that helped donate to make that a great celebrations. Okay, well, let's move on to Spanish Fork 101. Green Waste Composting and Vouchers and Chris Thompson.
So I've been asked to give an update on our green waste voucher program, maybe to give you a little bit of background about a, almost a year ago, or a year ago, the South Valley Solid Waste District, which ran the green waste program for this, from Provo South, voted to do away with their green waste program with the composting, taking your yard waste and turning it into compost. And because of that, Spanish Fork City started this green waste voucher program. But before I get into that, we appointed, the city council appointed an ad hoc committee of citizens from Spanish Fork City who had some really good qualifications to come up with some green waste and grass cycling and composting, those type of websites for us when this occurred. And they've prepared a couple websites that I wanted to bring to your attention. The first one is On Green Waste. And it was very interesting as they got into it, if you could scroll up a little bit, I just want to talk about this section here. It talks about how municipal composting programs are really not as green as you think. When you have to gather up the green waste from, from your yard and make a... your yard and make a special trip to a green waste site, which then has to take it and grind it, and then haul it to a place where it can make compost, and then spending all of the fuel and man-hours and time and cost to make that mulch into compost, and then haul it all the way back to sites where you can retail it and then sell it, it was quite a bit of loss. In fact, the solid waste district was losing about $800,000 a year, and we're about a quarter of that district. So, our losses were over $200,000 a year to provide that program. But one of the things that we found is that it really was actually hurting the environment more than it was helping the environment. And there's a lot of facts here that explains that in really good detail, and can help you understand why this solid waste district, the South Valley District, went away from a municipal composting program. Some of the facts about municipal composting here are really quite interesting as far as how it might, if you had concerns about the world's environment, if you wanted to be conservation-minded and green, how this really isn't very green. And then, this ad hoc committee started talking about composting at home. And we had some, the guy who replaced Chuck Sager with KSL came and talked to us and all these different things. And one of the things that they really keyed in on is something called grass cycling, and how this is really probably the best way to do composting, and to save the environment and to help out your yard. And so, with that, they created a website, if you can go up here. And we have now what's called the Grass Cycling or Mulching website. And there's a bunch of facts here I'd like to go over with you. But before we start, I had the opportunity to go to these committee meetings, and the chair of this committee had the most beautiful yard, greenest, just thickest grass. Councilman Gordon went to the meeting with me, and we were just outside looking at her yard. And it was very, very, very nice. And one of the things that she pointed out is that she mulches her grass, and how good this is. And the guy from KSL said, "That's absolutely the best thing you can do for your yard by putting the nutrients and the mulch of the grass back into your yard." And so, one of the things that we asked, we were like, "Well, doesn't that cause thatch?" And he said, "No, absolutely. Thatch? Absolutely not. Thatch is actually caused by the rhizomes of the grass, which happens when you let it die. You know, if you have a bad sprinkler system, you have dry patches, then the dead grass will stay there, and that's what causes the thatch. But when you mow your lawn and just let the grass stay on and mulch it instead of bagging it, then it's actually very healthy for your lawn." So, with that in mind, I started on my own lawn at the beginning of the year, because I always bagged my grass before. And I've started mulching, and there is a huge difference in how much better, particularly my backyard is with how much greener and softer it is. And I adjusted my lawnmower to be a little bit higher so the grass can grow higher, and it's made a big difference. And it's not quite looking like their yard, but it's getting close. And so, this is something that I've come to really believe in. But some of the interesting facts I want to point out is why should we grass cycle or mulch, which basically means we don't bag the grass, we just, we take off the bag and we just let the grass go back into the lawn. Even if you don't have a mulching lawnmower, they've shown that it's still better. And the mulching lawnmower helps a little bit, but just taking off the bag and letting the grass go back in is really beneficial to your yard. But one thing I've noticed is it takes a lot less time to mow your lawn if you don't have to bag the grass. The other thing is you save water. Somehow, it creates a layer that helps prevent the water that you water your lawn with from evaporating as quickly, and your grass needs less water if you grass cycle or mulch. Also, they've been able to prove that you need 25% less fertilizer to keep your grass green if you mulch. You save money. A lot of people will have two cans a year just so that they can throw their grass clippings in one of the black cans. If this made it so that you didn't have to have that extra garbage can, then it would save you $132 a year just by grass cycling. The other thing is landfills. It saves bringing the grass clippings to landfill. One thing that was very interesting, when South Valley had their composting program, everyone would bring their grass clippings and then their trees, limbs and stuff that they got, and weeds and stuff. And the first thing that the South Valley District would do is they'd take all the grass clippings, put them off to the side, and they'd haul those to the dump. So, never at any point were grass clippings used to make compost in Spanish Fork. You can't use that to make commercial compost through our municipal program. So, with that, if residents will just put that grass back, those clippings back on their lawns, it saves a lot of hauling and filling up of our landfill. And it's really, this is the real conservative way to save the environment or help out with landfill costs. So, there's another section on this site, and that is on how you should do your grass cycling or mulching. First thing is mow your grass high. Set your lawnmower settings as, you know, at a relatively high level, so that if you can, after you've mowed it, if your grass can be two and a half to three inches high, that's the best length. And then, you just mow it whenever the grass is long enough that it doesn't leave too much residue on top of your lawn. And that's really according to how you like your grass. But just mow as often as you would like to not have the grass showing up on top of your lawn, and so it mulches down in. The next thing is mow your lawn when the grass is dry. This keeps it from clumping up, which prevents the grass from settling down into the lawn as well. Sometimes, if you do, like in the spring, when the grass is really growing vigorously, if you mow it and you see a lot of clumps on the grass, or it's just, it got a little too long, just mow it again. And that usually chops it up and spreads it out a little bit better. Another thing is sharpening your blade. It's always best to just have an annual routine of having your blades either sharpened, replaced, or replaced once a year. And that is a lot healthier for your grass. If you don't, it more breaks the grass and cuts it. And that broken grass is a lot more susceptible to disease, and also turns yellow at the top of your grass more, and it kind of, it doesn't look as green if you have a dull blade. And then, the last thing is, and this is something that's really being pushed by the state and EPA, and you hear a lot in the news about the nutrients going into Utah Lake and all these things. One of the things that we'd like to really encourage residents to do is after they mow their lawns, to get a blower out or a broom and get the grass out of your gutters, so that it doesn't end up going down into the storm drain system and out to the lake. And if you can blow that out and, you know, blow it back into your yard and do the green waste. And there's a few facts, if you can scroll up a little bit more. A little bit of what I talked about with thatch. There was an experimental area done where they bagged a certain area, and then they took an area where they just let the clippings go back in. And it was very interesting. The thatch problems occurred more where the bag, the bagging was done. And the same with disease, it's actually healthier for grass if it's mulched. The last thing is, a mulching blade does do a little bit better job, although studies have shown that just a regular blade and letting it go back in is better than not doing that and bagging. So, anyway, if you could go to the voucher page?
Yeah.
So, at any rate, one of the things that we knew is that the residents of Spanish Fork were used to having a place to take their yard waste for free and getting rid of it. And this was now being taken away from them. And we didn't mean for this to just save the city a lot of money and take away services. So, the city council voted to do a voucher program so that people could still take their yard waste somewhere and dispose of it for free. And this was for a number of reasons. One is, we want to encourage people to maintain their yards, and to get their tree limbs and weeds and old bushes and stuff out of the way. And so, there's a voucher program that was put in place at the beginning of the year, which basically gave each resident three vouchers to take a load of green waste to the transfer station and dispose of it. And if anyone's not aware of this program, you can go to the city website and go under the compost and green waste section, and there's a voucher button that you can press. And all you need to do is enter your utility account number and your last name and submit, and it'll print out a sheet with three vouchers on it that you can print out on your printer. And you can print that as many times as you want, because it comes with a barcode. And when you take those vouchers and you turn them into the transfer station, the transfer station will allow you, if you have covered your load, which is very important, you need to cover your load, otherwise, there'll be an extra fee. But if you cover your load, they'll let you take it to the transfer station for free. And they collect all those, and they give them to the city. And we have a really great IT department that has developed this program where it issues those individual barcodes, and we're able to scan those and count how many vouchers each resident has used. And the residents have been great. We don't see any abuse of this. People are not submitting more than, taking more than three loads to the transfer station. We're tracking that very well. And it seems to have been a very productive program. We budgeted about, I think it was $32,000 for this voucher program, because we do have to pay the transfer station $8 a load, the normal cost for these loads. And so far, there's been about 12,000 vouchers used this year for a total cost of just under $10,000. And so, we feel like we'll probably only use up about half our budget. And that's a pretty good cost of around $15,000, which with doing away with the municipal composting program is saving the city well over $200,000. So, what a great result, I feel like, that this whole transition processing program is done. And we're still providing that service where people can clean up their yards, and they don't have to go and dump their grass and their limbs in the vacant lot or along the side of the road. They can still take it to the transfer station for free, or Councilman Beck's house. You don't have to do that. You can take it somewhere.
It's Brandon's, but he said yours. I was going to say mayor.
Great.
Any questions at all?
Oh, you covered it all.
Thanks, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
Motion to approve the consent items.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Scopes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Let's talk about going to our public hearing. Ordinance Z08-16, changing the zone designation and amending the official zoning map of Spanish Fork City for 1,000 north, zone change.
Mr. Mayor, the subject property is located on the corner of 500 East and 1,000 North, right here. The last time we changed zoning in the area, it was for property here that now is the Quick Quack Car Wash, just a block east of that site. The city has planned essentially that all of the properties that front onto 1,000 North eventually will be used non-residentially, either for retail uses or maybe professional office uses. So, the applicant's proposal certainly is consistent with the proposed general plan. And as the Development Review Committee and Planning Commission both talked about this, I think it's accurate to say that everybody on those two bodies felt comfortable with the idea that the zoning be changed to commercial two. The only question that we really talked about at all has to do with timing. Typically, when zone change applications are brought before you or even to the Planning Commission, they're accompanied by a specific development proposal. So, for example, when the zoning was changed for Quick Quack, we had a site plan that showed, if you really cared to look at it, where every bush eventually would be planted on the property, where curbs were going to be, different things like that. In this case, the applicants don't yet have an end user signed up, maybe so to speak, for the project. I understand they anticipate that the use is going to be retail likely, and I'll let them speak to any maybe more specific things that they can share with you tonight. But really, that question of timing and the lack of a specific development proposal is the one question that both the DRC and the Planning Commission struggled with a little bit. So, relative to the DRC's recommendation, we recommended that the proposal be approved, sort of to punt it down the road, to let the Planning Commission make a recommendation, then you decide. But we talked quite a bit about the pros and cons of going ahead and changing the zoning without a specific development plan. Planning Commission had a very similar discussion, and ultimately had a 3-3 vote. So, it comes from the Planning Commission with a tie relative to approving the proposed zone change. Again, not because I believe anybody has any concerns with the idea that this property will develop residentially, or even that now's the time to do that. It's more a matter of, should we wait until we have a specific development proposal so we can understand exactly what all would go on with that zone change, largely with the idea that with zoning comes certain rights. And typically, we want to make sure that we know what is at least very likely to happen with a property before a change is made and those rights are extended to a property owner. Does anybody have any questions about that, just relative to the action that the DRC and Planning Commission have taken?
What zone was Quick Quack?
C2.
Is it C2?
Yep. So, in fact, I think eventually you'd expect the majority of that block even from 9th up to 10th North probably to, so it might take decades for that to happen.
Okay. Since this is a public hearing, let's go into public hearing. I move to going to public hearing.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilmember Beck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're now in public hearing. Anyone that would like to come up and talk about this issue, feel free to come up and address the mayor and the council.
My name is Johnny Anderson. I'm a partner with Cornerstone Capital Holdings, who's the owner of the property. And we actually were the owners of the Quick Quack property before as well. The use on that actually changed from what we intended, and we had somebody at the last minute, the Quick Quack came and wanted that badly. So, we changed what we had planned to do. That happens a lot in development. Sometimes you kind of get, you know, started and you change direction because something else happens. So, this land now is under contract to a developer. They have some relatively specific plans, but no final end user yet. And one thing they were able to share with me a little bit more, asked me to tell you tonight, a little bit more than we shared with the Planning Commission. you tonight, a little bit more than we shared with the Planning Commission, and that is that two users that they're talking to that will probably be their end users are a home improvement store and the other is an auto parts store. It would be similar to the O'Reilly right down the street that's in, on the same side of the street. So, those, those two uses are their, kind of their final candidates for what they would probably use the property for. It's, sometimes because of the changes that can happen, it's a little bit of a chicken and an egg problem. In order for someone to purchase the property, they have to be convinced that it can be and will be commercial. And the best way to do that is have its own commercial. And, and if it's not, then sometimes it's difficult to get a development to happen. So, anyway, those are some of the things I wanted to tell you. Any questions of me before I sit down?
Are you, are you going to build the building?
No, I'm, I'm the...
You're just marketing?
We're the property owner and we're marketing it. And, and this is a California developer that does a lot of retail. They're, they're good national, regional developers, so...
Okay, thank you. Thank you. We might have some more questions after the...
I'll be right here.
After the others. Yes, it's your turn.
My name's Glenda Collins and I live at 530 east, 900 north, which is... Do you have a pointer? Oh, I do.
Just push the button.
So, I guess I live... Is it on?
Yep.
Right? Oh, right. It's the second house from the corner. Oh, right there, that's me. Right there. Okay? And I've been there for a long time. Long time, 25 years. I don't know where the time goes. Anyway, I, I'm just, I, I am aware of the master plan. I wasn't when I bought the place, but I'm aware that the master plan does call for everything from 8th north to 10th north to be commercial at some point, correct? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And is that both sides of the street?
Yes.
Okay. So, and I also understand that that might be a long-term project.
Very long-term.
Okay. Okay. I just, I, my, my reason for being here tonight is to just make sure that some of that stuff gets some common sense and some things that maybe you're not aware of. And so, I'm, I'm totally reconciled to the fact that it's commercial. I'm not happy about it, but I'm, I'm okay with it. When this, when this street became as popular as it was with Costco and everything, we all held our breath right here. But actually, there has not been a whole lot of traffic, although I saw all the accidents on that, on that previous slide, and I was a little surprised because some of them were right in front of my house and I don't know where I was, I missed them. Anyway, there is, by the way, there is an all-stop sign through this whole lane right here. And this is the exit entrance. Isn't this right? Am I right? This is the entrance to like Walgreens that isn't and all that up here?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so there's no exit or there's no, what did I just say? There's no stop signs that direction? And there's, to my knowledge, no posted speed limit signs? Okay? Right here, there's a stop sign and right here, there's a stop sign. Right here lives a family with three children, little, like under the age of three. So, my concern with the rezoning is I'm pretty sure that's gonna happen, but I'd just like you to be aware of a few things. The last meeting that this Planning Commission, they said that probably there would be an access point on 5th east no matter what, correct? I mean, they want the frontage and they want these too, right? A minor, oh, right here, yes, excuse me. Yes, that's correct. And they want these houses too eventually.
That's actually a backup offer, different developer than I was supposed to.
Right. Did y'all get that? A backup offer, okay. Okay. But anyway, nonetheless, we're either gonna have this or this with an access on 5th east, right? Right?
Yes.
Okay, so my concerns are this, and I, this is a nightmare. This appears a nightmare and that's a nightmare. Traffic-wise, you've got that weird left turn lane here that merges with a, you know, left turn lane from here that merges with the left turn lane that goes on to here. You know which one I'm talking about? Okay, that's kind of a nightmare on that corner. Got that cement barrier there. You do have a right-hand turn only this way, but if there's an exit here, an access here, then people can turn left onto here and go this way, which doesn't seem really efficient for traffic. But they can also come this way to this stop sign right here, right? Onto 5th east. And what I wanna point out is that this is all still residential. And we have to remember that, I think. Remember, there's no, there's no traffic control on this street. So, there's a stop sign southbound and northbound right here. This intersection right here, we sit on our corners and just watch the cars go by. After listening to you tonight, I realized we don't have the number of cars go through there because fortunately, they put in that, that stop sign up here that makes only turn right. That helped a lot. But the cars that do come through there regularly run that. So, these people on the corner, I told you, they have three little kids under the age of three. They don't like that. The previous family had seven children and it's always a concern. You just sit there and just watch them zip on through. So, even though it's a quiet little neighborhood, I just want you to be aware that this is a problem intersection, in my opinion. And don't, and I don't think anybody will, will disagree. That's a problem intersection and that is a problem intersection for the whole area, correct? Okay. Well, I just wanted to point out some of those things so that you're aware of them because my concerns are traffic are, oh, well, I, my major one is the traffic flow and the congestion that it will cause in the future. So, I think something needs to be done about that so that we can minimize that as much as possible. My other concern is parking on the street, or parking in general. I sure wish I knew what the church wanted to do with their property. I hope they stay there a long time. It's kind of a buffer for us. But parking, the, the bus runs regularly, you know, along this route. And the route comes like this, I'm so glad to have this, like this and goes back on the freeway. The bus stop is right here and it comes by regularly through the neighborhood. Well, the church, a few years ago, decided to rope off their parking lot. So, all the people who actually used to park over here, they said, you know, can't do that anymore. So, they can't, so bus patrons can't park there anymore. So, what they started to do was park all the way around the block on both sides of the street. My, right here in front of my house, because I have the only shade on this side, so people would park there, but lots of people around the block and then they'd catch the bus here. So, there was a lot of street parking at that time. Then, then, guess what happened? You remember what happened over here? All this developed and there's parking. And then Walgreens has nobody there, right? So, basically, it's a vacant parking lot. It's very attractive to these commuters, these bus commuters. And so, I don't know if you've noticed, and I hope I'm not causing more problems, but they park over here. So, it's taken the parking off the street. But you know what? That's gonna be unavailable at some point too, correct? Somebody's gonna stop that or catch it or something.
We all...
Well, yeah. Well, yes, but if they do come in, that's even more reason that that parking will be more valuable to the patrons instead of the bus people, right? So, it's kind of a double-edged sword. Well, anyway, they're parking here now. So, once, once that's no longer available to them, they'll start parking along here again, okay? They love this side right here because it has all those big, nice trees, okay? And, and in front of the church. So, I guess just looking long-term, I just want you to be aware of that so that if this has become more of a thoroughfare with traffic and more traffic, then I think you need to be aware that there're gonna be people parking all along there and maybe more as bus becomes more, a more viable means of, of transportation. Okay? Just something that I have noticed in the area.
Okay, we'll take a look at that.
Okay. The other thing I worry about is that there is not a specified developer here, so we don't know about noise and rush hour kinds of things. We don't know about hours of operation, light, all that kind of stuff. And so, I am concerned about that, only because you don't know really what's going in there more than anything. I know something is. So, I guess I'm just wanting to ask that you guys be sensitive to the types of establishments that might be here and some of the concerns that I've mentioned so that, so that we can address these in our quiet little neighborhoods right now. And just remember that all this south of Costco is, you know, all of, all of it through here is residential. So, we still have a healthy, happy neighborhood, which we'd really like to see safe.
Great. Thank you, Glenda. Appreciate you coming here.
I really appreciate you letting me do this.
Well, hey, we'll let you talk.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was thinking, I failed to mention one thing when I walked in and seen the, the chief. I didn't even think of letting the police know. Didn't, didn't even occur to me. So, with our viewing audience, if they have a problem, they can get a hold of the police department and exercise their concern. I hadn't even thought of that.
There you go.
So, I appreciate that, chief. And I'll sit back down.
All right, anyone else? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
I'll vote. Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Scopes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Any other discussion, comments?
Dave, maybe you or Chris can talk to us a little bit about Mrs. Collins. I brought up that road there that is tough sometimes because of the attraction across the highway again, but we've got some plans to line that up better that are supposed to be happening relatively soon, right?
Yeah, so, beginning next spring, the plan is to actually redo this island right here and, and actually prevent this left turn movement. So, at that point, you'll see the bus pattern no longer doing that. And, and that should make this whole intersection flow much better because then it's just a through movement here and you won't have as much weave. Another thing that the city has been doing is, is working with the Mountainlands Association of Governments to, and UTA to, to find a new location for a, a stop and ride. And, and we've been looking in these areas here. It's, it's quite a process to, to get that on the funding list, but we are working on that. And I'm sure when these changes occur, then that might make them a little bit more incentivized to, to do some of these changes. So, that, that should probably help with the bus route issues and the congestion right in this area here.
The bus isn't a problem, it's the parking that's the problem.
Right, right. But if the bus isn't there, they won't have the parking. All right, any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
How many acres does that represent, your properties that you own? It looks like three properties.
Approximately .85 acres.
.85? Brandon, you're not speaking all at once. You're usually a speaker.
Um, I'm usually not a speaker.
I, I, I appreciate the concerns. I think, I think they're warranted as, as it continues to grow in this area and push southward, it's gonna be some, there's gonna be some growing pains and, and some of them expressed here tonight with, with George and 4th east of, of problems we have there. I don't know, it'd be hard for me to gauge, I guess, what this change in zone would do to accentuate a, a problem like that a whole lot because you, again, you're gonna take away some movements that aren't there now. The, the part that we do try to not add to, I know, is as far as a pretty stringent, and if you see some recent discussions we've had in other places that, that we're looking for different zone changes and different things happening, is we are pretty stringent parking and landscaping-wise in the city. I think we, we overshoot it pretty good, parking. So, I, I, I don't see that, that there's gonna be a whole lot of concern in this area for, for additional parking if you have a, an auto parts store and a, and an Ace Hardware or something going in there. There should, I can tell you, this city will make them have, the developer will go through a process of having, probably fighting against this a little, having too much parking, too much landscaping, but, but I think that's a good system we've, we've allocated there. So, with those concerns and trying to mitigate them and reading through the discussions of the planning and zoning and the DRC, it, it seems like a natural, natural fit to me, mayor. I, I appreciate the, the concerns. I think, I think they're, they're somewhat valid. I think we as a city and as some of the changes that are already happening to 1,000 north can mitigate some of those changes substantially.
I think you're, you're exactly right. They're, they're not somewhat valid, they are very valid. I think that's what you're saying.
Sure, no, yeah.
I'm not saying that's not what you're saying, but Glenda and, and everything that she said, from what I was hearing was, you knew it was coming. You're saying, you know, just make sure you listen to me when, when you know what's exactly gonna be there and, and still hear us as residents. Am I correct in kind of saying that?
Very good, thank you.
Yeah, exactly, right? And so, with that, it's, it sort of echoes what Mike says. We know it's coming, but as long as we're, we're working hand in hand just to make sure that, that, you know, all your concerns are, are listened to and, and we, we know that we might not be perfect at creating this both buffer world for both, but definitely knowing that we're working hard to make sure that, that we do our best. So, and with that, I, I, I agree with it being, you know, moving that way.
Though, though it is a C2 zone, I, there is, there are some limitations because of its location next to residential and its location next to a church as to the businesses that are allowed there. I know there have been some concern about different types of businesses in the city and especially in, in some of these areas as they develop. Without going into it with, with too much detail, there are some restrictions on what can go there. It needs to be commensurate with a residential neighborhood that's very nearby and a church that's nearby. So, alcohol, for example, would not be allowed at that location. You had mentioned, Glenda, some things, just to be aware that it's a neighborhood as, as has already been mentioned. So, there are some things legally that are in place already to protect the interests of the, of the community of the neighborhood as well. So, those are things that will be looked at and considered. I'm sure the developer, as they're looking at the site, recognize and understand what can and can't be put there and would be looking certainly for something that's profitable but that would not detract from the, the community in the area as well.
The one thing I did remember, mayor, now that I'm done speaking, sorry, Chad, is the, I liked the idea, if it was the DRC or the planning and zoning, I can't remember which, discussed it maybe both, but the right turn lane from 1,000 north, I think whenever we have the chance to mitigate, you know, 1,000 north is what it is right now and it is, it is busy because everybody trying to get to that area. And I think when we, when we allow properties to develop on the south side of 1,000 north like we did... And I think when we allow properties to develop on the south side of 1,000 North like we did with Quick Quack, we had them, and it took away a significant amount of frontage. And especially when you're running a car wash, if you go look at that property now, they had to do a right turn lane from here dedicated to 400 East because the cars come in here. And so it chewed off, you know, a good 12, 15, I don't know, Chris could tell us the exact number of feet chewed off their property to make that dedicated so we're not backing up cars and getting more accidents on 1,000 North here. And the result of that is it made a hard turn into their tunnel to get in a car wash. I know my truck, when I took it through, it had to do a three-point turn to get inside the tunnel because it just wasn't ready for it. You can do it, but that requirement, you know, caused them some significant, you know, real estate, if you will, on that right turn. And I think as, you know, you only have a few more here that would be looking at, but I would be in favor if this is to be changed to a commercial zone that you, because we can affect, you know, these are already in on this side here and you can't take, you know, much more property at all. But here on the south side, I think we should be making dedicated right-hand turn lanes. So when somebody's trying to get in this business or get in this way or whatever it may be, that we're not having fender benders on 1,000 North and try to mitigate that. So that would be a requirement I'd put on it.
Okay. Motion to approve ordinance Z-08-16, changing the zoning designation and amending the official zoning map of Spanish for 1,000 North zone change. Yeah, I've got a motion by Councilman Argal.
Second.
Second by Councilman Gordon. Suggests an ordinance, will do this by road call. Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Councilman Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Scobes.
Aye.
That is approved. Okay, next one, ordinance 14-16, making amendment to setbacks, landscape, walls, impact fee reimbursements, as well as general clarifications.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. These have been available now to inspect for quite a while, so I'm not going to go through each of them individually, just going to touch on some highlights here. Stop me whenever you'd like.
Now?
Okay. You put yourself out there?
No, go ahead.
Stop it, stop the talk, stop the discuss. That's why Chris never says stop me when you want it. You learned your lesson.
That being said, I'm going to go ahead and just blow right down to the table. It's the first meaningful, really, change. Just cleaned up some language with the other things that are before that. So on page three of the memo that I produced, there's the upper part of our table that lists out, actually, I'm on the wrong document even.
See, we knew.
On the right one. Tyler's got the right spot, so changes noted in red. We're proposing to change the setback for buildings in our commercial office and commercial two zones from 25 feet to 20 feet, provided that there's 30 feet from the curb to the edge of the building. This will line up with some other things we'll talk about tonight, just simply allowing property owners to use their property a little bit more efficiently. So reducing that setback in those two zones, provided that criteria noted in footnote number four is met, is one of the changes. And allowing structures that are as tall as 35 feet in the commercial two zone where they abut a residential use or district. Right now, the height limit's 30 feet. We raised the height limit for residential structures a few years ago to 35 feet. The idea is that they should match. So in my mind, going to 35 feet for commercial structures is the right thing to do. Again, just allows a little more flexibility. I think very few of us probably would recognize the difference between a 30 and a 35-foot tall building, so I doubt that that'll be any concern for anybody. Again, in the spirit of just cutting to the most important parts. Going down to, keep going, Tyler, please. A little bit further, a little bit further. Actually, go up just a little bit. Not a big change here on billboards, cleaning up some language, just making sure that everybody understands that if you want to build a billboard, you have to be at least 400 feet from any residential zoning district. Now, the code really has that intent, but it reads a little bit differently. If you go down to the next page, Tyler. And I'll just note this real quick, if you want to stop there, you'll see this type of language in several different sections of proposed changes, you know, that we a few years ago changed our application, submittal procedure to where now everything has to be submitted to us digitally. At least, we prefer that. And this language here just simply clarifies that methodology and exactly what it is we want to receive. All of that is spelled out in ordinance. You guys set the standard that people have to meet as applicants when they submit. And this brings the ordinance into conformity with basically what our practice has been for the past couple of years now, so I think it's a worthwhile cleanup. Again, if you can kind of go, I believe, next page, sort of towards the bottom. So right here, this clarifies some things about impact fees and what is eligible by the city. I'll let either Chris or Junior speak to that in more detail if they'd care to. Cleaning up a couple of things relative to definitions that we have in the code for parking requirements, not really changing standards that we have, just making them more clear. At the bottom, we're getting close to the end. Down to two of the more important parts of it. So we talked about the change here in a couple of different contexts in the past, simply proposing to reduce the parking requirement for medical office uses from what you see right there, one space for every 150 square feet of building space, down to one space for every 200 square feet of building space. This change puts us, you know, in a, you don't know, I apologize, in a more consistent realm compared with other cities and what they require.
You talked about that in past tense, did you not? This was...
We've talked about that before, yep, but we haven't brought this forward for you guys to actually change yet.
50 wasn't scratched off on the document that I have, and so that's why I was confused.
Got it.
On the actual unit, but I can see it's scratched off up here.
Right.
I feel much better now.
Okay, got it.
What you were trying to get at.
Not a huge change. Again, kind of puts us closer to the norm. Lastly, right now, we require for, let's say, a medical office building, for example, that 30% of the site be landscaped. We've done quite a bit of research comparing, again, that standard with what other communities around us require. It's not uncommon for communities to require 30%. It's also not uncommon for communities to require less. By requiring less, that doesn't preclude somebody from providing 30% of a site as landscaping, but we do think that this is a helpful change in order, again, to allow property owners to use their sites a little bit more efficiently. It seems like increasingly, the projects that we're reviewing are on parcels that are oddly configured or that maybe it's a residential property or the structure's being removed and somebody's building a professional office building on that site. We've seen that happen several times. It's underway, actually, right now, that same kind of process on Main Street. And typically, when that happens, spatially, there are constraints that really make it difficult to put properties to productive use. And landscaping, I think, is one way where we can give a little bit and not sacrifice quality, but simply make it more feasible for people to, among other things, adapt maybe a residential property to a new use, as again, we've seen along Main Street and a couple of other streets in town. So that's, again, some of the highlights. Both the Development Review Committee and Planning Commission have reviewed these proposed changes and recommend that they be approved. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Might have some after our public hearing. I think we're going to have a big flood of people here.
Motion to go into public hearing.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Whoa, 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 notice it's a three-minute. I'm timing you.
Do you want us to go to a map, please?
Yes, that'd be great. So we have someone here who would like to talk about the ordinance, the impact fee one that Dave's, Junior, I could talk about. And so it might be good to prep you on that first and prepare it so that she can come and talk to it. Okay, but it will take longer than three minutes, I'm afraid. But if you could do an aerial over in the Maple Mountain area. Better get some food out, this. We have water, just, okay.
Bring the popcorn.
So we have a developer who's working on a development right here. And this developer, Jonathan Reed, is that right? This developer came to us and said, "Look, I'm running a 600 amp electric line here and a 600 amp electric line here that I don't connect to at all. It benefits all this area, it benefits all this area, and I have to pay a significant amount of the cost of that 600 amp line." And it's just not fair. And as we talked to Jonathan Reed about it, we agreed with him and started the process of writing a policy, which you have in this ordinance, and I'll bring it up in a minute, that would make it more fair. And basically what it said, if your development does not have a local connection to an improvement, then you should get 100% reimbursement for it through impact fees. But if you do have a local connection to it, then you will get reimbursed for the difference in costs from the minimum size of that improvement versus the regional size of the improvement. And so this works for almost all utilities, roads, everything. If you have a road improvement here that has driveways into people's front yards, then you are benefiting from that road. And so if it wasn't a regional road, you would have had to build the local road and you should pay the local road part of it, but the regional part should be paid out of impact fees. If you have a water line here, and this was another issue that he had, he was putting a 12-inch water line right here, that's regional, but because none of his lot faced south onto 100 South, there were no water laterals into these houses. And so he had no local connection. So because of that, the new ordinance would allow him to get 100% reimbursement for the water line, any water lines that he put over here. And so that meeting that we had with him sparked this new resolution. If you could go to it, it's in...
Dean Ford, is that what they're talking about, Chris?
Yes, if you could just switch to what was up just right before. No, it's what Dave Anderson was just... Okay, and so go down towards the bottom.
Right there, bud.
And so at this developer's request, it says, "Growth-related infrastructure that does not have local connections shall be eligible for 100% reimbursement through impact fees." If there are local connections, the difference between the regional and the local infrastructure cost shall be eligible for reimbursement from impact fees. So now go back to the map.
You have to work with Tyler. It's got to be a little quicker.
All right. So this really benefited this developer here and here. Where it didn't benefit him is he was part of this project to bring the sewer line up through here and it was a regional trunk line, okay, up through here, and it came through his development. Well, he designed his development in such a way that it could run down one of his existing streets and he could have sewer laterals from houses into this regional sewer line. So according to this policy, which we have before you to vote on, he would only be reimbursed for the difference in what an eight inch would have cost him to put in front of his houses and the regional size line. And so because of that, he's upset that this is coming before you because he was planning on 100% reimbursement for this line. And so that's one thing that I think Julie's here to talk about, and that's kind of the background of it, and I'll let Julie.
My name is Julie Smith, representing Jonathan Reed. So this agreement with EPCO and Arrive and Jonathan started, let's see, it was September of last year. And Jonathan was approached by Dean Ingram, saying that the city was willing to pay 100% reimbursement through impact fees for the sewer trunk line to be installed. My client went and talked to engineering and they confirmed that, that it would take about five to six years for the citywide impact and that it was a city, that it was an area-wide improvement that would open up development in that area. In October, there's a pre-con and my client said at that time, the city was reaffirmed that 100% of the money would be paid, reimbursed. And so Jonathan paid his proportionate money to Ken Condi. And the end of the May, I believe, the project was finished and approved. And then multiple conversations, one with myself and engineering, trying to get that agreement taken care of. And I looked at my emails, it was about July when I met with engineering and they wanted me to go back to Ken Condi and get very detailed information on the upsizing cost and sewer and, I mean, everything, the depths and everything, so he could calculate it exactly the difference. And I asked him, I said, "Do these guys know that you're no longer paying 100%? Did you tell them?" And he goes, "No, I didn't." And I go, "Don't you think you should have told Arrive and Jonathan that they're no longer getting 100%?" And I even talked to Dean Ingram and he was surprised that he was no longer getting 100% because that was always the understanding for 10 months. And then it changed to the new policy. So I guess the problem comes up with Jonathan sold the property with the understanding that he was getting 100% reimbursement for that sewer trunk line being put in. And that is his, I guess, his argument right now is that he doesn't agree with the proposed agreement for upsizing because he had the agreement basically a year ago that he was going to get paid 100% on that.
So did he have, when you say he had the agreement, did he have something in writing?
It was just verbal.
So it was just all verbal?
It was never written, right.
So who was, we talked, who did he talk to? Do you know who he was talking to, an engineer?
Well, I don't want to throw anybody under the bus.
No, I...
Okay, well then, we need to...
I can't, I can't...
Okay.
Maybe Chris can talk to us a little bit about that. Maybe Chris can talk to us a little bit about that.
So until this, if it gets passed, came, there's no written policy on what is reimbursable or what's not, other than if it's impact fee related, if it's growth-related. And that's been left largely to the interpretation of the city engineer and master plans. The practice before this new policy was asked for by Jonathan Reed was that on sewer trunk lines that were regional, we would reimburse 100%. But also, we would only reimburse the difference between a 600-amp line and a 200-amp line on the electric lines he had put in, and the difference between an eight-inch and a 12-inch water line here. And so the new policy actually saves him quite a bit of money over if we went with what was done in the past. But there wasn't a written policy in this detail, it's just if it's regional, if the city engineer determined it was regional, then it was reimbursed. So does that help? But your question was, who told him that? This guy's been working on this development for quite some time, and I'm sure that our engineering staff would've told him before that meeting with Jonathan Reed, would've told him that sewer is 100% reimbursable, because that is, was the practice before that. But then we had that meeting, and we talked about how some things are regional, some things are not, and some things are both. And that's when we said, "We would propose this policy to the city council and then base the agreements on that and support that if the city council approved it." So it kind of goes both ways. You can't, you can't have the, you can't get 100% reimbursable on one thing and then partial on the other. So I think, I think that I would recommend going with this policy because I believe it's fair and balanced, so.
Real quick, so I heard you, but I just wanna make sure that I'm processing what you said, is that, is that this, Jonathan Reed originally was anticipating, or at least was told from the city, that there was a shared cost with the 600-amp line...
And the water line.
The L shape, and the water line, but that 100% of the sewer. And the current policy then changes it, that it's a shared cost with the sewer, but it's 100% reimbursable because it's a regional.
Yes.
So the shared, so really the shared and the 100% reimbursables geographically have simply switched places. And if I understand what you're saying, if we go with the agreement that he thought he had originally, he actually will owe more money?
No, he's...
Correct.
Whomever is responsible for it now, regardless who owns it, they actually, in theory, under the old agreement, would owe a lot more money than with the current agreement.
It would be more expensive for him to pay...
A shared of the water and electrical.
A share of these, and then get 100% reimbursement on this than what is proposed now. And so, you know, when he sat down with us and showed us that this was unfair, we actually agreed with him, that's when we decided to write the policy. And I guess what, what he hadn't anticipated is that would affect the sewer line.
Sure. So the question I have, you mentioned client, I'm sorry, I don't...
I'm just a developer.
Oh, okay, I didn't know if you were legal counsel or quite how you fit. Does either Mr. Reed or the current owner, do they understand, do they then understand that they, I don't understand why they're arguing the fact that they would pay less with the current proposal.
In Jonathan's mind, he, it was always his understanding that was 100% reimbursable, and that's...
For the sewer.
For the sewer. And he has since sold all the property and has closed with Salisbury. And it was Salisbury's understanding, when they, when he came to the city, that the new policy would be in account, so.
Right. But that same policy was that the electrical and water would be a shared cost. Is that correct?
The old...
The old, the old understanding, we'll call it. The old understanding was that, yes, the sewer would be 100%, but the electrical and water would be a shared cost. And so now with this new proposal tonight...
I guess what my client, or Jonathan's, is saying that he has grandfathered in, that when he put this in a year ago, or agreed to it a year ago, and it's been done, and since the payment's been made and everything's been done, everything but the final agreement, that you're changing it while it's all said and done, now you're not gonna get reimbursed what you thought. It's not like all the other improvements are in, and you're waiting for that, this improvement's said and done.
So, well, and that's what I don't understand, is, yes, the, you know...
Here, here, let me, let me help.
I'm just trying to figure out why, why they're arguing that they would have to pay less.
Well, yeah, kind of going around in circles. So there's an old case, goes back into the 80s, called Western Land Equities, and it basically says that you're entitled, as a developer, to the benefit of what the rules are when you submit an application.
Okay.
That's kind of where Jonathan is on this. Really, he's in a position, he can choose which way he wants. He can't have it both ways, but he can choose which way he wants to do it, and that really solves the problem.
So provided that the proposal tonight is adopted, can we fall back on that and say, "Okay, very well then, we'll reimburse the sewer," but you...
Adopt it, which is probably a wise thing to do, but that eliminates all the questions. But he would still have the opportunity to choose which option he wants.
The only question I have with that, Junior, is if we fall back, after making, if we were to make a change tonight, how far back can we go? Will there be other situations where development is occurring that they want to be reimbursed?
Those that are pending somewhere in the process. So there's Jonathan, and there's Dean, I think that might be all, there might be one more up in that area, but be very few.
No others in the city that would be...
Well, anybody who has a pending application that's not concluded, right?
They could.
Yeah, I'm not aware of any, but there's not going to be very many.
Okay.
That was very helpful, thank you.
Who do we, what's our policy of...
If Jonathan no longer owns the property and is wanting to be reimbursed by impact fees, because he paid a contractor to do that, but he doesn't own the land anymore, our policy is we pay the person who paid the contractor to do it, regardless of whether they own the land now or not?
We just pay whoever we have a signed written agreement with. So if it's in his name, we pay him. And that's, that's what we would have. So it doesn't matter how it changes hands, we just make the check out to whoever the city council approved the agreement to reimburse.
But Jonathan paid the money, the agreement will be with him. Now, he can assign it to the seller, the buyer, he's the seller, he can assign it to the buyer if he wants, but the agreement will be with him because he paid the money.
You said this is all done? The sewer line?
Yes, sewer line's in place.
So is the electrical and water done too?
I don't know. Some of it probably is.
But this thing is gonna develop, this whole development, right? This thing that we're talking about tonight?
It's just this development, right?
Just that, right there?
Well, so the policy entitled 15 is, just going forward, it gives our engineering staff clear direction on how they decide whether it's impact fee reimbursable or not. And it's very good to give them that clear direction, whereas in the past, there wasn't a written policy as, on this level, to say, "Okay, this is what you reimburse, what you don't." It was determined by the city engineer and the master plans what is reimbursable and what's not, based on what is regional. And so it was kind of left more up to engineering analysis, whereas this gives clear direction to engineering staff.
She mentioned several other parties. Are there more parties that this can impact than just...
It would affect any development going forward.
No, but I mean, it's put this line in that's expecting 100%. She's talked like Salisbury, and you said one other person.
Arrive.
Arrive.
Only if they have local connection to it. If they don't have local connection, then it would be 100% reimbursable. So it's only if you get a benefit. I don't have to put in an eight-inch line anymore because of this, then you need to deduct that cost out of there and only get reimbursed for the regional part of that cost, because you would've had to put in that line to get laterals to the homes, so.
I understand that, but the issue here is, they've done this work now. This is complete, and this is before, we're passing this tonight.
Right, right, so I would...
You just say he has the option to take either or?
Yes. I would say let them have the option, but they need to realize that it would be unfair to give them the best of both worlds. You can't...
Well, I guess that's where my question comes in.
All the old rules or the new rules, but not...
A mix of both.
Not a mix, it's to your advantage on both, if that makes sense.
My question of two owners is now, who is gonna put this? It's certainly not gonna be Jonathan Reed putting this in. So we're gonna make, you know, a decision, which I agree, we should make that decision, and maybe he's gonna wanna be reimbursed 100% here because he has precedent or whatever, but, but, you know, somebody else is gonna put that in.
At a much more cost than what is saved on the other. This is actually, this new ordinance is actually more fair to the developers, and it gives them more reimbursement where we didn't reimburse them before on some items. So I think it's actually a much better, clear way to do things. And ironically, it was this developer who asked us to bring this to you, so it's just...
But that water line and the power line, you said, are going to be 100% because there is no connectivity into that subdivision, correct?
Correct. They don't have a lateral off of the infrastructure to a house.
This isn't gonna impact...
Not if he chooses to be fully reimbursed on the sewer line.
On the sewer line.
Then we go back to the old...
Then the old policy will apply for those parcels.
I'll ask a question of Junior, but I'll do it on the microphone so that you can hear it, the public can hear it. Do we have a contract yet with this developer in, for any reimbursements for impact fees on this project? Do we have a contract signed and agreed to by him and/or by us? Or do we have one in the process?
There's one in the process, I understand.
And what?
It's still an engineering under review.
And have they reviewed it? Has the developer reviewed it?
I don't know where it's at.
And which, which program is it following? The old way or the new way?
I don't know that either.
The new way?
I don't know.
So Chris whispered in my ear, "The new way."
The new way, I need to record this.
I guess as I'm sitting here listening to it, I'm struggling with what to do as well, but there's no written agreement. Without a written agreement, how do you say, "Do it this way or that way"? He hasn't been, he doesn't have a signed agreement, he doesn't have direction from us, he doesn't have something to say, "This is what you said you were going to do, and I can say whatever I want." I'm not implying that he did or didn't say something, and our staff did or didn't say something, but in today's world, it's easy to change words. So without a written agreement, I struggle with saying, "Let's do the old."
So Seth, there is a development agreement between he and the Arrive Homes and the city. There's not a reimbursement agreement in place.
A development agreement.
Yeah. At the time I had, I can't tell you exactly what that says.
So I, yeah, you can, but I'm sympathetic, and yet I'm supportive of what Mr. Thompson just said, which is, the development can choose one or the other, but it's pretty, pretty interesting to say, "I wanna have, I wanna have the old rules because it applies here, and I wanna have the new rules as they apply there," and kind of come out the winner in every angle. I'd recommend he do some, some analysis to the project and say, "I want this," or "I want that," but not "and."
So if we pass this tonight, then he still has that option?
He can give us that direction, I think.
Because that was in before we acted on it.
He can give us that direction.
Right, okay.
Julie, did he expect that, your client?
Will he what?
Was he expecting that? It sounds like he was the same guy requesting this change, and, you know, I guess I'm in favor to make this change tonight if he's got the flexibility of being able to go back and work it out, but...
I don't see how, I just see it becoming a huge mess, because he's expecting 100% reimbursement on that. What Rick Salisbury does, inflecting his fees, is up to Rick.
But Rick and Jonathan are gonna have to work an issue out there.
But it's all said and done. It's done, it's paid for, closed, and done.
Could you come up to the microphone, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, you're fine, these are televised meetings, so the public can hear.
I know that Jonathan is expecting 100% reimbursement, because that was his original agreement with the city verbally, to get that line in and done. And the property is since sold, and I can guarantee Rick Salisbury's not gonna agree not to get reimbursed for those new, putting the development in right now, you know, not getting reimbursed for those. So, I mean, I globally see it, but I also agree that Jonathan and Arrive and EBCO had an understanding with the city in putting that line in.
Thanks.
All right. There's no other discussion, I'd entertain a motion.
Based on Chris's recommendation of, I like the idea of us giving clearer direction as a council and, and the city to our engineering department, so maybe this doesn't, whatever this comes out to be, right, doesn't maybe precipitate itself in the future as other developments go on, and maybe we're not gonna have a whole lot of other stuff like this, but I like having this ordinance on the books, so there is some clear direction to our engineering department. I think that's what we're elected here to do, is give them direction, so.
I move we close the public hearing.
Okay.
Hold on a second, Matt.
That's a good idea, Brandon.
Good job.
So can I ask, so one person...
Hey, man, I got a vote on this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So one person will lose and one person will win, because it's not the same person getting the money. But the first person doesn't have a contract.
Verbal, he understands, yeah, because he's going from the old rules.
But we're really not making a decision on that tonight anyway. I mean, that's gonna be settled in a, that's gonna be settled in some...
They'll still have that opportunity.
To find it out or whatever, already.
But that is also how we've done it in the past. We've made an agreement with other developments, that's what we've told them. We haven't had, we don't have a written agreement from other developers that's done that, correct?
In the end, we always do a written agreement.
In the end, when we get the thing, but, well, in the end, when you get the development approved, yes, you have that.
At that point, there's a written agreement.
But at this point, are you just saying that, so we just went out there and told them, "Just go ahead and bury this sewer line, and we'll reimburse it"? Is that what we did, Chris?
Chris?
And that's what we've done?
So we, we tell them that after they make regional improvements, they can submit for reimbursement through a reimbursement agreement, once those improvements are completed and the costs are known. And as of, before that meeting with Jonathan Reed, which I think was about four months ago, maybe five months, it was certainly before he sold the land, before that, we would've told them that we reimbursed for 100% of regional sewer lines. That is what we typically do, and that's our policy. We had that meeting, we said, "Yes, we'll bring this to the city council, and we'll base the agreement on it." So no one's deceived anyone here, and he was involved with this from the beginning, so he just didn't realize...
But he's the one bringing it back.
The sewer line as well, I guess, so.
But the reimbursement's not on our action item tonight. You're saying you'd bring that in front of us at a later time to say, "We're gonna reimburse him 100% of that."
Correct.
So we're not making that decision.
We're just putting the policy down.
You're just deciding on...
Future policy.
On a future policy, and if he has the option... And if he has the option to go with all the old rules, which would affect the total cost versus all the new rules, I don't see a problem with that personally, so.
Having said that, now I'd entertain a motion.
Well, again, I won't reiterate what I've started saying before Brandon rudely cut me off. You know, I think this is a good, a good way to keep things going in the future, and I think landowners and developers will probably work out situations between each other, hopefully on this aspect of it, to where this land price settled out or whatever the development agreements are, maybe between them. But I do appreciate Julie coming here and talking about what was represented to her client as well. And that's important for us to know as a council and the citizens to know. So, I'd make a motion to approve ordinance 1416, making amendments to setbacks landscaping walls and impact fee reimbursements, as well as general clarification.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilmember Beck. We'll do this, a roll call, it's Comson Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Scopes.
Aye.
Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Comson Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
That passes. Okay, moving to FY 2017 budget revision number one. And you're on the clock.
This is very complex.
Did it bring any candy?
How many revisions do we get through the year?
Many should be approved.
Two to three, three to four.
Okay, this will be quick. There's a little paragraph I give, I put in the front of it. This revision is a small revision. It's mainly to handle the purchasing of some homes on the top of Center Street that we've talked about. And in today's agenda, there's agreements to purchase three homes. And this is, in that area up there, we just finished the Cut Bridge capital projects. This is kind of an extension of that same area as far as extending from Highway 6 down to Ninth East, past the junior high. So, there, over the next couple of years, there's approval projects to widen that side of the road. And so, we need to start purchasing the homes. It will be, the city will be reimbursed to these homes, the cost of them, but that funding doesn't take place till 2018 or '19 down the road. And so, the city's fronting these, the purchase of these homes. So, what this budget amendment does, it transfers $700,000 out of the general fund into that same capital projects. In that capital projects fund, there's $350,000 that was left over from when the Cut Bridge was done, but it stayed in the fund balance. This is activating, or going to say, we're going to use that 350 now in addition to the $700,000 to start buying those homes down that street. So, if you look in the impact of it, in the very last page of the budget, is that capital project summary. And so, it's approving a million and $54,000 that can be used to buy some of those homes. And where that source comes from is 354 from fund balance, the money that's left in there from the Cut Bridge, and then 700,000 from the general fund. And that's all.
Any questions?
We go into public hearing?
Yep. We need to.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Scopes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone here that would like to talk to us?
Don't. Chris.
I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Councilman Scopes, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'd entertain a motion.
I move we approve FY 2017 budget revision number one.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Scopes, a second by Councilman Gordon. Since, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Okay, new business, contract for canine training at the Reese School.
We're proposing that we approve this contract. I need to give a little background on it. Our canine officers are involved in frequent training for their canines. They do that in conjunction with other canine authors throughout the county, and they have to host the training every few weeks. As they've looked around for someplace where they can do the training that suits their needs, they have looked at the Reese School, the old Reese School, not the new Reese School. There's an old vacant building, it's large, has a lot of rooms, it's ideal for the training they do for searching for persons, for things, and even doing some of their drug sniffs. They've also noticed that the owner has a hard time keeping the weeds under control, and we have some vandalism going on there because it's been vacant for some time. So, they approached me about the possibility of doing that. I contacted the attorney, who has a little bit difficult time contacting the owner, his client. But he's done that, we proposed, why don't you let us in for training? In return for that training, we'll keep the weeds down, and we'll post some signs that we're doing, we have a police presence here, and hopefully that will keep the vandalism down. The owner's indicated his interest in that because he's difficult to get hold of. He actually hasn't signed it yet, but we're asking that you go ahead and approve this so when we can track him down, and we can get that signature and move forward with the training. Now, because he hasn't signed it, probably three things that can happen. If he has, great, I'll sign it, make some minor modifications, in which event, I would hope in your motion, you authorize us to proceed with minor modifications. But if there's some major changes, we'd want to bring it back. And so, with that understanding, we are asking you to go ahead and approve this contract.
Contract will have the address in it, right? Not just Old Reese School?
Yes.
I don't want him at my next door neighbor, you know what I mean?
Do you want a police presence in your neighborhood to keep?
Well, I already have it, I already have, you know.
What are you thinking?
I deputized George Fairdall earlier tonight, and he's going to come up.
He can do that for you.
Yeah. Thanks, Junior.
All right, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract for the canine training at Old Reese School.
Got a motion by Councilmember Beck, a second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Resolution 16-08, repealing prior resolution dealing with water backups. You're on the clock.
Okay, we had a resolution in place that dictated how we reimbursed or helped out people who have backups in their homes. This letter has changed several times since this, or this resolution, and so, we would ask you to repeal it and then handle it by administrative policy, so.
Any questions?
No, I understand why this is taking place, having, sort of having a presence in this industry and with just the fluctuation that can happen. We had, when Seth and I originally sat down, probably five years ago, and discussed a dollar figure, we thought we had a pretty good beat on what we wanted to do, and then we had the 16 home backup in December. I think you were councilman-elect still. I don't think you're even sitting on the council yet. Possibly. So, I completely understand how this has evolved to what it is today with just every situation being different.
Different. Okay. All right, I'd entertain a motion.
So, I'll make a motion that we approve resolution number 16-08, which is a resolution repealing prior resolutions dealing with water backups.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. Roll call vote. Councilman Scopes.
Aye.
Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman...
Councilmember.
Yeah.
Well, you've changed. Mendenhall.
Aye.
So, had approved, been approved. Okay, moving down to board appointments, I would like to appoint Richard Davis to the planning board.
Who's that?
Motion to approve the mayor's appointment of Richard Davis to the planning commission.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilmember, or Councilman Argal, a second by Councilmember Beck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'd be happy to hear that. Workforce service building access agreement.
So, as you can imagine, we had a really interesting traffic study for all of the development going around the new Walmart area. And part of that traffic study showed a need for islands to be constructed down Canyon Creek Parkway. These islands would block off some access routes. Right here, we have the workforce services building, and then this is the Deseret Book building, and then the Credit Union here. And you can see where the islands would be placed. And so, in order to, to work with the property owners in that area, we had several meetings and explained the needs for this, and we had three different traffic engineers analyzing it, one representing the owners, one representing the developer, and one representing the city. And this is the consensus on what would work the best in that area, and it involved closing the northern driveway for Deseret Book and the driveway for workforce services, and then installing a larger combined driveway for the two of them that lines up with the South Walmart intersection across the street so that we could have a full access movement in and out for both of those entities. And then adding a ride-in, ride-out driveway, which would be shared by workforce services and developments in this area. Anyway, this agreement is a four-way agreement. It's with Deseret Book, who has signed the agreement. It's with the owners of workforce services building, who has signed the agreement, and with the developers, who have signed that agreement. And it just needs our mayor to sign it with your authorization. And so, we think this is a really good example of working together with businesses to get much-needed traffic improvements done and keep them all whole. It has cross-access easements that are recorded. It also has some land trading going on. If you could go to the next slide or the previous slide. Basically, what would happen is the developer or workforce services would deed the blue to the city as part of our right-of-way, and then the developer would deed the red to workforce services as part of their parking lot over here. And then workforce services would deed the orange to the developer. And then the previous slide that you had seen would record easements here in the green so that there's cross-access to both developments. It actually increases the number of parking stalls overall, and it makes everyone better, actually. So, we think this is a good agreement.
Chris, were you signaling that intersection, or is that coming later?
No, this intersection is not planned to be signaledized. It's too close to the signaledized intersection that will be here at the Center Walmart access. And that intersection will actually connect to a loop road, which will go through the development around by Sapa.
Okay. I would entertain a motion for the mayor to sign this agreement.
I move that we approve the mayor to sign workforce services building access agreement.
Second. A motion by Councilman Scopes, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. I move we go into closed session. Second.
Before your turn, Chris, number two.
Well, the only reason I'm letting you, only reason I'm letting you, because you pack a gun.
Yeah, I'm not going to take three minutes either.
Good.
We have been in an agreement with the Utah County Major Crimes Task Force for, since 2008. That was the last time it was brought before council to sign the interlocal agreement. It's, they're changing some of the rules on when the agreements need to be made, the funding source, the federal funding people are indicating that we need to do that yearly. And so, they're asking for us to do this last month, actually. And so, I've got it in Junior's hands, he's read through it and has made a resolution for that, and it'll be on your agenda for next council meeting. But in the interest of time, we're going to give it to you, Mayor, and have you look through that. And of course, Seth has already looked through it, and then perhaps with your approval, ratified that signing of the interlocal agreement next month.
Great. We need to do anything, but, okay. All right.
Same motion.
Motion stands. All in favor?
Aye.
We will now adjourn to closed session.